Here, Council, we're streaming live.
All right, thank you.
You are unmuted.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'll do a phone check. Doug Herman is on the line. Just want to check with Doug if he can hear us.
Can you hear me, Doug?
Yes, I can.
Are you able to hear me? Very good.
Yep. I've noticed that EJ Bell was online but appears to have dropped off. So... I think we'll go ahead and see if he can rejoin.
Think somebody contacted him?
Yeah, Sandy, you'd like to. Okay, I think we'll go ahead and get started. Just for the record. Please stand for the question allegiance.
I have questions of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our...
Welcome to the Atkins City Council meeting for June 25, 2024. Would announce that we have Doug Herman, City Attorney, is online on the telephone with us. Expect EJ Bell there as well, who was there earlier, but... Any response? Okay, so we'll go ahead and continue on with the meeting. With that, we'll begin with the roll call of the members present. Jim Kane.
Present.
Trevor Dersky.
Present.
Samantha Peterson.
Present.
David Fisher.
Present.
EJ Bell will be absent until he joins. First item on the... Agenda for this evening, for action, is approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
And a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the agenda?
Yeah, I got a question. We've got the firehouse back on the agenda tonight. It was voted down two weeks ago. I thought we would be taking this to the voters of the city in order to approve or disapprove of it.
Okay, since that time, there's been some modifications made and a request to revisit that... The new resolution.
Who's done that?
Samantha Peterson made the request.
I think it's too important not to continue to move forward, so I'm glad to see it back on the agenda.
Doug, a project of this size would normally require the voters to approve it, correct?
It depends, to some extent, on funding sources, occasionally. I have to look up that rule, but...
Actually, I've...
I think normally it's maybe... Not the right... Normally might not be the right word. It could be presented to the voters by way of a referendum, but it's, in this case, not required by law, so it's kind of a council decision if you want to go that direction.
May I answer a little bit? I sent this to you today. I talked to Maggie... Perfer, right? From Spirit Financial, and she reviewed for me how the city got here with the fire station project. Normally, in the state of Iowa, cities are required to have referendums for brick-and-mortar projects over $3 million. You must go to the voters for a referendum. Because of the natural disaster, the derecho, the disaster declaration, this legislature, the state of Iowa, has given cities the authority to bond for projects over $3 million that are disaster-related with a reverse referendum clause, and that is what the city of Atkins did, was that they had passed a resolution that authorized this project, that up to $4.5 million bond issuance, with a reverse referendum clause. That reverse referendum timeframe expired. It's so many days that the citizens had the ability to go out and get signatures and call for a referendum that reached that final day, and the city was authorized to proceed with a brick-and-mortar project like this one. The other thing I would mention is that the $3 million is... Fire stations are essential for purposes, and that's what gives you the $3 million threshold to start with. So some projects don't qualify. Depends on...
Sure. So that, giving us that authority for that...
Hello?
Hello, EJ.
Hey, I'm calling in on the phone instead of the video. I couldn't get through. Can you hear me fine now?
We can hear you, EJ, and our meeting is in progress, so... Can you hear us?
I'm on mute. Yep, I can hear you. What is mute? Star six or something?
Star six is mute on your keypad, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So with the council voting it down two weeks ago, does that change that ability at this point in time from a legal standpoint? To be able to vote for it now, or should it go to the citizen?
Yeah, oh.
The only thing that the council voted down last meeting was a contract amendment with solemn one.
Understood, but that also put the fire station in jeopardy at that point in time.
I believe Doug Herman, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'll pipe in the reconsideration, if you will. I use that word loosely. I'm not using it in the legal sense or Robert's Rules of Order sense, but basically what's on the agenda tonight is a slightly modified resolution from what appeared a couple of weeks ago. Different... You know, under the state code, there's nothing that says you cannot even reconsider the identical resolution over and over and over again. Now, most cities have policies that speak to how you might handle that. So if a resolution is presented and it is voted down, it can only be brought back if one of the people who voted it down requests that it be brought back. That's kind of a common rule or a common policy you'll see a lot of cities. My knowledge, Atkins doesn't have any approved policies on point, you know, over the last year, so we talked about some things that the city could use moving forward from policies and procedures standpoint. That would be something that would normally be set forth in a policies and procedures manual. Now, if you wanted to follow Robert's Rules of Order to a T, which I will say that no cities do, they maybe try to, you know, Robert's Rules of Order has some standards with how you do a reconsideration as well. Minor. So from that standpoint, it is a new resolution. It's not the identical resolution that was voted down at the fire meeting. So even in those cities with policies that might say to bring an exact resolution back, you need someone who voted against it to do so. That probably wouldn't apply in this case because the contents of the resolution have, to my understanding, been modified. With regard to the impact of this action item to the declaration, the disaster declaration, and the freedoms it gave the city, if you will, to bond in excess of the Iowa Code maximum because of disaster subject to reverse referendum, this would be unrelated to that, I'd say. It wouldn't impact that from a legal standpoint. The only thing I would say to Dave's point, based on my understanding, what the council has approved as far as the fire station project, if the council does not approve Solemn Lang amending the plans and specs to some extent, it kind of puts everything back in place then, because just because you approve moving forward with, for example, a $5.1 million project, to do that, Solemn Lang has to amend their plans. And if you don't amend their contract to put them in a position to amend their plans, then you really can't go forward and out to bid on a $5.1 million project because you don't have plans and specs and cost estimates and everything you need to go out to bid. So there is a relationship between this resolution and what was approved for the fire station, but I don't think the relationship at all impacts your ability to move forward without the vote of the people.
Further discussion?
Yeah, and maybe this is more appropriate for when we get to the agenda item, but just to review. So on May 28th, we did approve to move forward with an alternate option B, correct? And that is still in effect. And to your point, Sandy, all we're doing tonight is reconsidering the contract amendment with Solemn Lang. And there are a few, a couple modifications, and maybe we can talk about those later. But the reason I wanted to bring this back is, like I mentioned before, I think it's just too important not to reconsider this. I still think it's the right path forward and a way to compromise and move forward with this very important project that the city needs. The resolution does state that the city council will work collaboratively with Solemn Lang, so I think that's language that we haven't had included in the past, so that's a positive. We all have input, for those that are willing and would like to, in these discussions going forward. So there are some changes, and like I said, I did request that this get put back on the agenda for tonight because I just think it's too important to push off any further.
Any further discussion?
Because I'd like to speak to the public referendum. We had numerous council meetings, at least two, three public meetings where that was discussed and that policy was established to ensure that we're meeting all the codes and stuff. It's... Dave has brought up this public referendum at least twice, maybe three times since he came on. It's unfortunate that he didn't attend any of those meetings or was not involved in this project prior to becoming a council member. That would have probably answered a lot of this and solved this discussion. The only way to go to a public referendum now is if the council changes direction and actually votes to go out and put that to a referendum. That was, and that's possible with a majority, but that was the way Maggie and our attorneys and stuff all had that explained to us prior to the two public meetings and during our council meetings when they were public was at there.
Any further discussion on the motion to approve the agenda?
Um, Mayor, my only mayor...
Okay, he...
Mayor, not interrupt, I... It's hard to... We're all in different spots, so I apologize for that. One thing, again, I wasn't necessarily prepared for the discussion on the referendum tonight or essential corporate purpose versus general corporate purpose. But I did pull up the code while we're sitting here, and under Chapter 384 of the code, which is the city finance code, under the general corporate purpose definition is where the acquisition, construction, reconstruction, enlargement, improvement, equipping of city halls, jails, police station, fire stations, and then it goes on. So I clarify that under 384, the erection or construction of a fire station is what's called a general corporate purpose.
Okay, and then EJ, Councilmember EJ, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I don't know what was discussed. I don't know what's on the table right now, but for me, it was the understanding, I've had multiple discussions with people with this, when this was brought to us, when it was me and Julie and I think Sean, Jim, and Sam, that, you know, yes, we were going to get a bond for $4.5 million, but it was stretched to us by formal administrators, Solemn Lang, Bruce. Like, hey, we're not even going to come close to this, even though we already had money on the table already. You didn't know what was coming from the federal government. And so that's why I'm pretty firm on sticking to $4.5 million for the total spec, you know, of the project. So I'm kind of just in that spot to where if we're... I know we've had the option where the council made the decision because of the declaration. I get that. But I just think that we're getting to numbers to where the, I mean, the cities, you know, should vote for it and give that the option. You know, that's kind of where I'm at on that.
Okay, let's... We'll leave the discussion on that probably to the agenda item for the... For item number six, right now, we have comments concerning the approval of the agenda itself on the table. And thank you for joining, though, EJ.
No problem.
Hey, I just want to throw out there, Doug, I just want to confirm because essential versus general here, it's the W and the X subsections of, like, the definitions of what essential corporate purpose means, which allows you to remediate, restore, repair, clean up, replace, or improve buildings destroyed by a natural disaster. And I think that's how this becomes an essential corporate purpose, if I'm understanding the pre-levy documents correctly. I just want to clarify because I don't know if, under the general corporate purpose, you have the same authority.
Um, okay, I'm unmuted, sorry. I was, I actually, again, I apologize.
No, 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 it's all right.
Prepared for... Yeah, and just, so I'm actually looking for that right now. I mean, under the definition of 384...
384...
...defined this to be a general corporate purpose.
384.243.
24C.
Three, three, one, two, three. And then the whiskey and x-ray, the W and the X subsections.
Yeah, I'm looking at that as we talk here. You know, I... I, Sandy, I assume you talked to Maggie?
I did.
Perfer?
Yes.
Yeah. And she would be more knowledgeable on this than I would because this is what she deals in, but my question would be... And again, I'm sure what she told Sandy is going to be accurate, but the question I would have had or I would ask, this isn't really... What I'm not certain about looking at this is just the restoration of a fire station. It's not rebuilding, cleaning up, repairing the existing fire station that was damaged by disaster. It's constructing a new fire station, but... So it might take just a hair more research than looking at just the language of the code section, but Maggie's been doing this a long time, and I would say I would have a lot of confidence in what she told Sandy, but...
No problem, Doug.
I will...
Restoration wasn't possible because it was completely destroyed, and...
Yeah.
That was the coding that she gave us, because it was completely destroyed, and we were in a position to do something different, and it wouldn't fit where we needed. We were in the unique position that almost no city has been in in order, because of disaster declaration, we were able to move that into our TIP district and apply TIP funds, which were already established through the earlier bonding. So that allowed us to have additional funding resources available, and our advice was if we did not take advantage of that, it would be ludicrous and completely difficult for the city.
Yeah, let's... The item on the agenda topic that we're discussing right now is the approval of the agenda.
I think we're ready to vote.
So I think, call for a vote, okay? Councilmember Peterson has called for a vote.
Well, I think it's time to call for it, but I didn't call for it.
But no, but that's actually part of the procedure, so it's fine.
Oh, okay. I just didn't mean to overstep you, I guess.
No, that's fine. So at this time, we will call for roll call vote with David Fisher.
Aye.
Trevor Dersky.
Aye.
Jim Kane.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item number three, consent agenda. Approve the city council minutes of May 28th, 2024, June 11th, and June 18th, and the list of bills for approval. And once again, we'll call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Give me a second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing done. Moving on to the roll call vote. Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
Trevor Dersky.
Aye.
Jim Kane.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
And EJ Bell.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number four on the agenda. We have a presentation by Fowler Public Sector Consulting, Sandy Fowler, on a report on staffing, consulting, accounting services, planning for the city. And at this time, we'll let introduce, we'll introduce Sandy Fowler, city administrator interim. She's been with the city a little over four months, and I'll let Sandy take the floor at this time for a presentation.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, thanks for the opportunity to give a little recap, I guess, of where we're at. As you know, my contract was intended with each of the four months. That's what we set it for. There is a clause in the contract that allows, by written mutual consent, the city council and I to agree to a month-to-month continuation of the contract under the existing terms. So what I placed on the agenda next for your consideration is that clause that allows that month-to-month just a resolution, authorizing that. So you can kind of keep that in mind as I just give you a little brief overview of kind of where things are at with me and the work that you've asked me to do for the city. I have a report. It'll look familiar to you. You've seen this report before that outlines a number of tasks that I've... Tasks isn't the right word. Projects and needs identified within the city of Atkins that I think are really required. I think none of these are nice to have. None of these are, you know, the highest performing cities or, you know, that kind of thing. These are what I consider, you know, minimum expectations of a city of your size, our size, to function appropriately and efficiently and legally within the structure of local governments. They are in categories. I will not go through the list at all. What I decided to kind of do as an overview is, you know, say the categories that they're in. One is, I'll give you some examples of that. City council, and under the city council, goal setting. I think goal setting is absolutely imperative for the city to go through. It comes up repeatedly to know where you're at, where your priorities are at. How should you be spending time? How should staff be spending their time? You need to have those conversations and get them in writing and agree to them so that both staff, people like me putting things on the agenda, spending our day, prioritizing everyday work, those goals are really important to know, you know, what meetings we go to. Is it to get parks and open space money, or is it to get grants for, you know, water towers? I mean, it really is important. Sometimes feels like a superfluous thing, but it's really not, and so that's a good example. Doug Herman mentioned city council procedures, meanwhile, tonight for policies. I know you've had some of that presented to you. Those are good examples of council. The next one's budget and financials. We've probably talked a lot about those. You will see in your, on your table tonight, not in the packet, was the, are the main financials. So the goal for those is to get them to you on the second meeting of every month. We're up to date. We're getting those to you, albeit a couple days late. I, you know, prefer to have those in the packet, and I let ESG know that on Friday before the meetings. Utility billing, I outlined some things. Utility billing is actually pretty high-functioning here. The software's not. It's not connected to the financials, but overall, it's a process that obviously has to run every month. 800 water bills go out, about 50 to 80 late bills go out every month, about 20 shut-off notices go out, and about two or four shut-offs happen every single month in the city. So that's why it works well, because it has to. City Hall office, I have a lot of things in there. That's city council meetings, resolutions, ordinances, the codification of the ordinances, which is in critical shape, really deficient condition here. Document management system, you know, the things I hear from residents or nuisance issues, culvert issues, those are the kinds of things that need procedures for, need consistent procedures, letters going out to fences that are illegally constructed, you know, those kind of processes. So I think the city hall office. Human resources, we've talked a little bit about those, personalities, that just need some attention. Policies needed, employee handbook, financial policies, you know, those are a couple of the ones that I've identified. Major projects. Mentioned parks and open space, the water tower project coming up. We have a smaller one, Leaven Copper, coming up, tree removals. Some of the stuff that was approved in the FY25 budget. Some repairs that are funded in there that need contracts and bidding. And then finally, economic development. It shouldn't be final. It shouldn't be last, but it kind of always is. We need to work on new TIP agreements. Really, we should be working on annexation agreements and plans. We need to be working on commercial development, you know, luring a grocery store and other commercial developments. It'd be great for the town. It's great for the tax base. You saw that in FY25 budget adoption. The addition of general dollar that came on the tax rolls for this year increased your commercial taxation 47%. So it's a huge benefit to the city to get economic development, specific economic development. Some of the projects I just wanted to bring, you know, I was kind of trying to say, what were those major projects? It's so hard to explain what the day is like. I need to do a better job of that. And I'll talk a little bit about that, but some of the big things. FY25 budget, our property tax levy and budget amendment was filed by April 30th. Just reminded where I started, February 28th. Just reminded where I started, February 19th. The 24 budget amendment was due on May 1st. Fire station clearly still, still on the table. City staffing, city hall operations, just talked about that. FY23 financial audit, I think I mentioned that last, um, meeting. They were here, um, onsite and remote for about 10 days doing the audit. We'll see the results of that audit soon. We did get the initial exit interview. It looked very much like FY22, um, almost identical. And, uh, as you expected, since we just finished 22, the public weren't expecting us to be able to make much progress on any of those things. But, um, that will be reviewed into you guys very soon.
Sandy, for the public, could you say who did that audit?
Sure. It was, um, the city of Atkins goes through the state, the state of Iowa.
So the state of Iowa is actually doing the audit?
Now, my understanding, it's a small city thing. My understanding is that any city can hire, you know, McGlady or Clifton or, you know, Mike, that's my understanding. I think they're not expensive, I think, for state of Iowa. I think that's why, um, most cities, smaller than certain number use them, but this is my first experience with them.
Yeah, I've seen some stuff on social media that basically led us, led somebody to believe that it wasn't the state of Idaho, Iowa that was doing the audit. So that's why I wanted to make sure that got out there.
Then finally, FY24, but what, what right now is in play? It's, it's the 25th of June and so, um, 24 budget closeout, which is June 30th. So there's a number of things that need to happen, um, to close out the current year budget. And what's throwing me off a little bit, we're cash basis and I have to keep that in mind. I'm just doing a cruel budget where, you know, things are a little bit more in play, um, based on when you receive them and things. But we're, um, and then getting FY25 budget operational, as we discussed, how do you get those, that charted accounts? How do we get things really, you know, kind of coming so that, uh, hopefully, uh, like next year's budget, we have some really good comparisons, be able to show a little bit of trend that, um, get a little bit more written down so that, um, we'll start a little bit ahead and do that. So, um, one of those current priorities I heard definitely from, um, the city council with city hall staffing. And so I just wanted to cover just a, a little bit, a real high level about that. In the FY25 budget, what was funded was a city administrator at a full FTE, a city clerk at a, a full FTE, the existing, uh, uh, filled position of deputy city clerk at a point seven five FTE. And then, uh, utility billing clerk is what I called it, a point seven five FTE. We have a, a temporary part-time, um, as-needed, um, office assistant is what it's called today. And what I've found is that that's having, not having those staff, those positions staffed ever, to my knowledge, did you ever have four people in the office is why you don't have some of those city hall organizational pieces in place. That's, you know, it's really A to B. If you don't have enough people in the office to make sure that the council, what we do tonight, what you're passing and approving and pub, you know, making sure the minutes are published, that the resolutions are approved and contracts are signed and scanned and put into a system, you know, all of those things take time. And, and when the phone's ringing and somebody's saying, why is this happening out there in the, you know, in the community where we want to spend a lot of care and attention? You know, those things take longer than normal to do. And, uh, and they just simply have not been done. So, um, so those are the four positions that are what, three point five FTEs for the city hall office. My, uh, strong recommendation to you tonight is that, um, to, a couple of, a couple of things that I'll, um, it, my recommendation to you is to hire a search firm. You need to, um, hire a search firm to facilitate the hiring of both the city clerk and the city administrator. I don't think either one of those positions really can be hired without assistance. And the first thing, um, I would recommend that you do is as a six-person mayor and council, work with, um, that professional to identify what it is that you are all seeking. A good way to look at it is, you know, think about the people that have worked for you in the past, in the past few years. What has worked? What has not worked? What did you like about what I'm doing for you? What do you not like about what I'm doing for you? What did you not like about, what did you like about other staff members who have worked here and how they interact with you and interact with citizens and interact with the public? And you need to come to conclusions about the six of you and what you expect so that when you hire someone, they are going to meet those needs and make very clear what a recruiter can do for you is identify candidates who are up for that challenge, who are, have shown success in that in the past, um, who know how to, you know, do what it is that you think is important. And city administrators and clerks are hired for different reasons. I, I can speak better to administrators, you know? I've worked for an administrator who was hired, you know, for economic development. That's it. You know, that's, that was the most important thing. Some are community interests. Some are getting counsel, you know? I want somebody who's going to listen to six council members and get, you know, get things pushed through and moved. I want someone who's going to manage staff really well or manage projects really well. So I've met all of those people and they are different people. That's the problem is you, you know, that one perfect person doesn't exist in the world. And so you got to figure out what's the priority, what's the most important, um, for this city, for this council at this time. And, um, and a recruiter can help you identify that. The other reason for hiring recruiters is, and, and all recruiters, I think, can do this. You have to pick the one that works for, for you. But, um, recruit and identify candidates. Who knows where city administrators, city clerks are? Who knows those people who can call them up and say, I know you've been in this city for a while, but maybe you're looking for a change? Who can promote the city of Atkins to potential applicants? You want somebody who's calling them up, saying, here's what's, you know, beneficial about coming to this city. You know, and then the bread and butter stuff, you need just, um, someone to help you follow employment laws, hiring process, background checks, drug testing, employment verification. Being a public employee is different than being a private employee. There are a lot more steps to ensuring that we're following all those laws. And then finally, job offering, contract negotiation, all of which have, um, employment laws, uh, attached to them. So, uh, with that, what I would also say is that, um, to identify those contracted assistance, even if you started with a recruiter tonight, um, it's, you know, a sixty, ninety day process to get people on board. My, my understanding is it's shorter for a clerk because they typically don't have to give, uh, as long a notice, um, to former, you know, current employers as city administrators are expected to give, you know, at least a month's notice or something. But clerks are, are not that way. So you could probably get, you know, you can shorten that process for clerk. And I would say right now, your priority is clerk, you know? And, um, because some of the higher level stuff, um, one, I can help assist with, um, but you need somebody, um, to get in and start running the office part of this, um, day-to-day with a permanency in mind. So just to refresh on the contracted assistance we have in place, we have ESG in place. They're doing financials. Like I said, you got the main financials in front of you, um, to June. How did I keep saying May? June. No, I, right, it's May. We're in June now. Sorry. I'm distracted. So, um, got financials. We've asked ESG to do a few other things. They, you know, can only do so, they have lots of clients, you know, so they're not working for us, um, you know, as a primary client all day, every day. But we've asked them to assist with some other things that are within their wheelhouse besides just, um, not just, but the financials, the money, bank recs and all of that kind of stuff. Those are mostly HR related. We asked them to, um, give us a proposal on payroll. I think they're close to submitting that to us to outsource payroll. We've asked them to look at and, and I have asked them to look at and, um, give us some kind of feedback on what kind of human resources they can provide. Again, to ensure human resources has gotten very legal and complicated in recent years. And we need to make sure that the city is compliant with, with all laws and, um, I'm concerned about some of them. We've asked them to look at some existing, um, issues that were in the audit, employee health benefits that were, you know, needed paid, that, that kind of stuff. So they're working on some of those for us already. Teresa Ratchefer, she's going to be here Friday morning if anyone else comes here. She's going to work with me on end-of-year, um, financials. I will ask her to start talking to me about, you know, it's, could we do a day a week or something, a more permanent, you know, more consistent, um, relationship with her to, to start doing some more of what I consider long-term financials, um, policies, residential policies, um, how to, how to achieve those policies and that. That's kind of what her wheelhouse is. EC cog is a, a partner that's already in place for grant administration and can probably be expanded as we do look at other grants, um, that are available. And, um, you know, when you hire people like EC cog, they do, they, they do it for us. They do it for other cities. They do it faster, easier, more consistently, always within the law, that kind of stuff, and are a good partner. And then the, um, the existing need for that experienced city clerk assistance is really what's missing. As I think about the future, I, I am interested in and happy to, willing to, um, continue working with the city of Atkins. I, I don't want to work, um, as many hours as I have been. I, uh, would love to outsource as much as we can until you get permanent people in place, knowing that it might be, you know, the first of the year before, uh, even a person hired would be up in, you know, you need this transition time where you have, um, if we have all, you know, me and all these people and you're hiring, you could see where you can wean, you know, certainly, um, some of that assistance off. Maybe you decide to use all that contracted assistance. Maybe you don't, depending on who you hire, right? You know, it depends what they bring in. And you say, I do that. I don't need someone to do that or I need to learn that. So they need to keep doing it until I learn it. Identify projects. Like I said, this list of projects is frankly stuff that I don't think these people could do, even if you had them in the office, you know? There's a reason why they haven't gotten done. And, um, uh, so, you know, how do you keep those projects in play? I would put at the top of the list, codification, you know, of the ordinance, your laws aren't up to date, you know? It's really not good for a city not to have a really firm grasp on what the ordinances, you know, and where they're at, um, and making sure that that.
It can't be enforced if they're not codified.
I think it's difficult, absolutely. And then, um, finally, my, um, last, you know, I, I think, um, just a comment about the list. I felt good, I guess, kind of, it took, you know, the four months early to put together this list. It's, um, kind of awesome in the not good way, you know, kind of the scary way, the, it's a lot. But knowing what it is, it is, that means you can tackle them and choose it. The, the biggest piece of that, what I'd say is prioritization. You know, you, you're going to have to look at it with me, with others and decide what's, you know, most important and what's first, what's last. I wish they, you know, I, I look at the list and go, oh my gosh, we need it all. Obviously, that's not possible. And it, and all of them take a, a lot of time, you know? And, and it's not just a person's time, you know? It's not like if I sat down for a good day, you know, I can get it done. It's, you know, that what I talked about before was like impact and difficulty. If I got this done, it, it would improve all of these things, which means has a high impact if I get it done. But the, and the difficulty though is Sandy can't do it, you know, on a Saturday when she's really ready to go. It's, I need to do some things. I need to talk to the attorneys, talk to other people, talk to other cities even, a lot of these, you know, Howard, how's it done? They're going to ask me, how should it, how do other cities do this? What, you know, what do other people, um, what do other cities look like? And then you bring it to council, you talk about it, need to brief you guys, you get to come, you have to get comfortable with it. I mean, think about, you know, some of these one little lines, um, end up being hours and days and weeks to get them approved. The example I gave was employee handbook, you know? There's a lot of pieces to that and all of them need, you know, thought, you know? I mean, you really, you're going to want to and you should consider each policy. You know, some are easy and many of them are not. A lot of them have impact on the culture of the city and what expectations you give into your employees and, and, um, have a impact on an idea, you know, potential to, um, change that culture. And, uh, so you're going to want to give it due consideration. That's just one thing. So, um, I'm happy to respond to any questions that you have from me or, um, the other thing I would be happy to take is, um, direction from the council on, you know, things that you'd want me to, um, consider and think about or bring back to you, um, you know, those kinds of things as well. And then any questions you have on the idea of extending my contract.
I want to say thank you. Two and a half years I've been here. I've heard ninety percent of this stuff, but it's never been on paper. Obviously, it's not where we need to be, but it's a starting point. It's something to go on and every time we can check something off, but it, it's a worksheet. It's something that we have not had. We, we hear it verbally, but the council can't work without a plan and, and without some sort of documentation. Just identifying the workload, how many hours these different tasks takes. Because quite honestly, not only the council, but the town as a whole. Where the, that staff is in the background, they think they're sitting around doing nothing all the time and the only, their only job is to answer the telephone and to solve their problems that they bring in here. They have no concept of the number of hours billing pays, the, the number of hours, the late notices, the shut-off notices, the fact that we can't, when we put shut-off notices in the door now, safety, two people have to go around. You can't have, whenever there's anything that, shut-offs, all of that for safety factors require two people. They, well, what's a one versus gap? Yeah, that's not allowed anymore. You know, I don't know, you know, we need to have that information. We need to be able to get that information out so that people understand. We, we're not a hundred thousand, but we're not two hundred and fifty anymore either.
And Sandy, do you have, uh, any top recommendation from your list there? You had several items and one was renewing your contract, but is there anything? And you mentioned the clerk position.
I think, um, I guess the good news is that we have, um, ESG in place. So, you know, we have, you know, we're at least keeping up on, um, some of that work. And Teresa, I mean, I feel good about what we have put in place. I absolutely think that hiring, that getting into a hiring process with professionals would be my recommendation.
If, if we move forward with that hiring, like you, you want a city clerk first, and I understand that, that's, that is going to give us the biggest bang for a buck. My concern is the place we're at right now.
Is what? I'm sorry?
The place we're at right now, we are behind, we're down in this hole. I'm looking at what, what, what we want this town to be long-term. I'm, I'm looking down the road at where we're stable and doing what we should be doing at the town and trying to find a way that we can outsource or subcontract something immediately to get this back glove covered so that when we go into the hiring process and we start getting some of these other people, we can show them a job that isn't so overwhelming that either we have to overpay or they're going to walk away from. I guess that's, from my experience in, in the other field, we did that a lot at Rockwell. Whenever things like this happened, we brought in temporary help of some sort or other. And then they were in there with the new hires trading or getting them.
So my, um, I, I did, um, talk last week to Elizabeth Hansen, who I know you guys talked to right before I started. She's one of two firms that I'm aware of that does specialty, you know, recruitment for cities. Not that you have to use them, but, um, those are the two places that I know of where you can find people who have city experience in clerks or administrators and both temporary and permanent. I, I, you know, in Iowa, I think, you know, GHR, you can talk to them, but I don't think they have an Iowa presence per se, you know, that they're not bringing in people from around here, I guess. But, um, so, you know, two firms, one I talked to early and I talked to about that in my, one of my first weeks presenting, but, um, it's not really interested, I don't think. Midwest Consulting, that was with Hanson, um, she seemed interested. She, you know, I think she might give you different advice about the clerk administrator. Traditionally, I think if you were in this position, you'd have the administrator brought on board and then help you build a clerk position. Now, both, and by code, I'm certain that, that council appoints both the administrator and the clerk. So I don't know that it matters because it depends how much authority you give the administrator to be a part of the search process, but, um, uh, give the administrator to be a part of the search process, but, and I'm not a believer in keeping positions open for that, and it's just a philosophy that empty chairs don't help new employees, that, you know, if you had a clerk that had been here five years, that's who you'd get. If you came in as administrator, it's no different than that, in my opinion, but an empty chair means you have a backlog of work. That's, it means that no one there knows how the stuff was done, and, you know, that kind of stuff. So I always, I, you know, I always firmly believed in full positions, so, and probably the reason I think that the clerk is important is frankly because I'm here. Now, if you weren't interested in extending my contract, which is absolutely fine with me, I don't want to give any impression that it's not, then, then I don't know, then it's a toss-up, because I don't know how you're, you know, how you're going to get even any kind of things done, but if I had, if I knew where I could get a temporary city clerk, I would have that contract in front of me right now. So I don't know how prevalent that response, you know, that, that skill level is, so.
The other option, the other option I've been playing with here too is, on these first positions, trying to find someone that is older and more experienced, we would probably end up paying more than would be standard for this job, but get that experienced someone that's two, three, five years from retirement, that has a lot of experience, that they can help us get up to the stage where we can then hire their replacement as, at a lower salary.
I would caution you not to use the word age, I would say experience, before Doug chimes in and cautions us, because it isn't about age. It really is about experience level, and different people have different experience, you know, I can be, a certain agent have a lot of experience or no experience, so it really isn't that, but that's why I think the six of you need to have good facilitated discussions to say, what experience do you want them to walk in with? You know, I, I feel like I've been helpful, but my experience is very different than, you know, someone else you're going to look at, and somebody that's going to have a lot more relevant experience than I do, different, you know, from what I bring. Every person you bring in is going to be like that. You are just not going to find, you know, the perfect, oh, my gosh, you know, they're going to walk in and change the world. I looked for that person in my entire career as I was recruiting, and, and they don't exist. You have to decide, you know, what is more important? Do I want someone that's worked in a city a long time? Do I want someone who's managed a lot of stuff? You know, ESG did not have a lot of experience with city finances and municipal, they did a lot of nonprofit, I, you know, I definitely grilled them about whether they can, you know, adapt, and they did, you know, and they were, they were able to adapt very easily. I had Teresa, you know, to help them with the public sector stuff, you know? So I was able to fill a little bit of a gap, so they understood where those little nuanced differences were, but, you know, so that same thing can be applied to literally any of these, I think. The one thing I, you know, we have been working on is putting SOPs in place, you know, we have to write down the procedures when, you know, and I think those ones, we get more of those, sharing those with you, so that you have some, you know, some concrete examples of what it takes to do things, you know? To your point earlier about staff, you know, the staff's there, and by call, why didn't they answer? Well, you know, because, you know, this and this and this, and, and I think that, I think it's really, would be really valuable to try to see how all those procedures that need, need to happen in order to provide good service. You know, you bring up utility billing, because it happens every month, it kind of hits you, but we're, I mentioned this before, and I apologize, but it's just one of those things that bothers me, and this, this city collects $1,000 a month in the late fees. I mean, at 15 bucks a pop, which means a lot of payers are paying late every single month. And what I would love to do is be able to analyze, why is that? And we have, we send out, you know, 70 or 80 late letters every single month, and then they come in, in these droves, paying online and bringing checks in, paying late to not get shut off. And then it starts all over, and it, and they're, it's chronic, it's every month, and you know how much hours that takes? If you paid on time, I'd say five hours of time. And, you know, that's when you look at your residents and say, what are, what can we do to help? What can possibly, is there some kind of, you know, renew, I don't know, I don't know what this system is. Is our online paying system, I've certainly, in my short time here, we've run up against things, you know, it's, maybe it's not the best one, it doesn't, you know, if your credit card expires, you may or may not know it, and so now all of a sudden I'm getting a late fee because I didn't know it didn't, you know, that kicked it back, I wasn't paying enough attention, because, you know, I've told you before, I think the cities, that people should be able to take cities for granted, my water should run, you know? My water bill, if I'm signed up for auto pay, should be paid, you know, and, but it doesn't always, it's not, it's not a glitch in our system, it's just, you know, it's just that every single month, you know, it's happening, and those, maybe the 15 bucks isn't high enough, you know? Although I called other cities, I will tell you, I, I kind of pulled, because you guys asked about this a bunch of times, that that's a big number. I mean, that is an unusually large number, and I was calling around to make sure it wasn't, and it is, it's a little bit out of line, based on the number of users we have, but the amount, the fee wasn't much different. I mean, I, I think it was Newton has a 15 water, 15 sewers, or double waters, you know, for the same thing essentially. One, one city has their late fee as a percentage of their water bill, and I thought, oh dear, you know, let's not do that, you know? That comes complex and ripe for error. You know, so you want to continue to do things like that, but how do you, how do you make it more efficient, that then maybe helps the resident as well, you know? You know, is it that people are overextended, or is there a systemic glitch in, you know, that could help residents, that then makes city hall more efficient, you know? You don't want to be a stress on your residents like that, but it's, something's happening really that's different than other places, so, but that, and that's one, that's, you know, one example, but because it happens every month, it's prevalent, bad checks, you know, we don't have a bad check policy, which means you can write a bad check every month if you want, and they'll go through the process with you to have you pay a different way, and, you know, you all, you know, it's, and, you know, because we're government, we don't get to just change the rules, we have, you know, if I tell someone they need to pay, they're going to, they have every right to say, show me where it says you can do that, you know?
I mean, we have a problem with our external box here for law, too, it depends on the days. If they wait till it's raining, or if it's raining while they're paid, they put the check in there, and the ink runs on the check, and then it's not readable, and you have to get it rewritten, or the bank doesn't, so that's all time consuming, is all get out, and ways around that are not easy to solve either. We can't put a drop box inside the building because the security thinks, no, unless it's totally protected from-
No, we have, we have a drop, we have a drop box.
Yeah, so, EJ, do you have any questions for Sandy? We, we can move on if that's-
I just want to kind of see what the, yeah, yeah, just kind of move on for now. I want to see what's, what's the next part with the other conversation.
Motion to approve a month-to-month, but Sandy Fowler.
I will second that.
Okay, so moving on now to item number five.
When do we-
When do we vote?
When do we vote on the resolution to go month-to-month? Is that the next agenda?
That's perfectly fine, I'm just announcing that we moved on to item number five, just for the record, and we have, so we have a motion, month-to-month, and the contract amendment is in the package for this evening. And Sandy, are you okay with a month-to-month, or would you like a certain number of months in that motion?
I didn't, I thought we can just keep evaluating, remember, in my contract is, you know, a monthly evaluation, and try to keep that going as well as we can, and I, you know, I think if we just keep talking together, you know, because it's mutual, you know, if I have something that doesn't work, and you guys, hopefully we'll be able to evaluate it together, is my thought, but if you'd rather put a date in, I'm absolutely fine with that as well.
I think the only thing, and it's fair to you, is if there, if we agree on a task list that kind of monthly will, will, will get done, I just, again, fair to you, fair to us, it's kind of like, if there's an expectation that certain things need to be done, but you're on variable hours, basically, if you don't think you'll get to those items, and they're identified and agreed upon ahead of time, then you can let us know, it kind of helps us adjust.
If we could get to that, where you said, this month I want you to get a contract for codification in place with a whatever, I think that would be great, I, you know, I, I think that would be terrific, and what I was going to try to identify soon is, you know, council meetings, I'm trying to think of how, I mean, we just need more help in the office for coverage and phones, and, I mean, especially summer, I, you know, I have some things to share with you, you know about all of them, but, you know, it's going out of the community, which means the phone rings, the water is off, you know? You know, I know that, we have a lot, I mean, we told people, but a lot of phone calls, you know, hey, the water's off, yeah, it is. So what you plan, but how, I would, what I'm, my goal is to move away from some of those daily tasks and try to work on some of these things that will hopefully make those daily tasks easier. I mean, it's one of those where I've always preached, you know, do some work that makes it more efficient, that you can't stop doing the thing to do the thing that makes it more efficient, to really, and I think when, when I hear you say, what, you know, let's do this thing this month, it makes it a priority, you get it done, you don't look at the whole list every month, there's no way, so I, I think that would be a great strategy.
I actually like that idea as well, that task list thing, and you can kind of tackle some of the small things while you're tackling some of the big things, so it feels like you're actually accomplishing stuff at the council and as yourself, so, because there's some of those things I think we can knock off pretty quick within a month or day, but let's keep moving forward. I think that's a good idea, Trevor, I'll actually do that, I think.
And can we count on, for a recurring kind of task list, would be work on the agenda, work on resolutions, the weekly meeting, or, sorry, the weekly, the Friday update?
Yeah.
And those are just kind of baseline?
Right.
Okay.
No, I, I think that would be something, would you, do you have, does anybody have a suggestion on how to prioritize? Would you like me to offer a couple of, you know, suggestions for the first month or second month, and maybe some options, what I think, you know, are-
I think, I think that would be, Sandy, I think that'd be a good idea, and then we can, and then as council, we can look at that list as well and kind of maybe have a quick discussion.
Give me feedback, yeah.
You know, as a council, I'm like, okay, what, yeah, and what feedback do we think? So we're not like all four or five of us going, five different things, that just makes it more complicated, probably have a quick mutual, hey, guys, what do you think would be good for the list, otherwise it becomes a point of action.
And the monthly reviews, we got to get to them, I think we have, I think it's a, it's a nice point to pause and have a conversation and to catch up, so I would just offer, if you want to throw those in the second meeting every month, I would support that.
We did them every month, they won't come on.
What about customer service, Sandy? Do we all load that, or part-time help or something? Like you just said, the water was shut off. We know things like that happen in regular, and we can anticipate that. Is there some way that we could have just some of that really menial stuff, that we could hire some part-timers, some customer service type person in there that would just help pull even a portion of that load, so you're not answering the phone? Now, I said a long time ago that we could do a lot with our phone system. Our phone system is automated, and there's ways that we could route those calls and stuff, and even have messages on the phone, but it takes time to set that stuff up.
So maybe Atkins people like people to answer the phone, I will tell you, you know, but no, I, I think so, yes.
So I think maybe those can come on, the individual task. We do have a motion on the floor, David Fisher, second by Samantha Peterson, and that was to, to approve the resolution with amendment number one, or the Sandy Fowler contract. Maybe further discussion on the contract itself, rates or anything. The hearing done, we'll have a roll call vote. David Fisher.
Aye.
Trevor Dersky.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
Jim Kane.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
All right, Sandy, I suppose so, aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Any other action by council on that topic?
As far as your recommendation to work with a professional search firm, do we need to give you formal direction to, to explore those options with Elizabeth Hansen or others? Or is that something?
I would think that would-
I think that's the next item.
Yeah, so, yeah, the agenda is written so that at this point you could take action, or you can always give me direction, certainly, if you want to make a motion to do something, you can do that as well, but, the more formal, but something like explore, yes, let me know, and, and if you have more words about that, I know about Midwest Consulting, I know about Henson's, what was his home name? If there are others that you want me to, you know, reach out to, I am more than happy to do that, and try to arrange, you know, for some of you have to, you know, whatever that takes, but I think that's important.
Okay.
You know, I'd like to make a motion, proceed with the particular task?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to-
That opens discussion, I-
Yeah, do we need to be specific? So I guess I make a motion for, to direct Sandy Fowler to explore options for professional search firms, including Midwest, is it Midwest Consulting, Elizabeth Hansen? I think it's worth reaching out to Henson one more time, and if others have ideas or contacts I'd like to add specifically.
Yeah, I think that moves us into number five. I had reached out on multiple occasions to the Palmer Group here in Cedar Rapids. They're an executive search firm in Cedar Rapids, and what they bring to the table is a search locally, and they have candidates that are local. What they do not do is they don't look, they don't, they, they don't hurt, they're professionals in city government, and that's not what their forte is. And basically, that's what I told them I thought was a good thing, specifically for Atkins. Number one, what they bring to, what they would bring to the table is the ability to cover both positions, and they could do it locally, be able to source those people locally. They already have people in their pipeline that have office management, that have accounting skills, they, they basically specialize in accounting people. They specialize in executives, finding the executives, and basically, the thing that they don't bring is that city government, and we've, we went down the road of the city government type of search and not had that great of a success. And I just want, I'd like to get away the, away from the politics portion of it, I'd like to get the professional in here that has that experience with public, so to speak, with, with office management, and I was, I, I reached out to each council person, encouraging them, or I was wanting to encourage them to talk to these individuals, and I didn't gain much momentum. So that kind of left this group kind of scratching their head of, especially with me telling them, well, I've got to have, we've got to have people with three votes in order to go forward with you, and they don't want to just waste their time. It costs them time and money when they're, when they're coming in and doing presentations and things of that nature, and- coming in and doing presentations and things of that nature. And if what I heard was, we only want people that come from a city background, they're wasting their time. So, and I know, I don't want to waste their time and I don't want to waste their, their energy. The thing that they bring to the table also is, is they've got skin in the game. Every one of these other search firms that you're going to find, they're city administrators in another town. They're, they're doing that job plus they're doing city, they're, they're doing a search firm typically. That's what I've seen. And they cost anywhere from $10,000 to $16,000 and they have zero skin in the game. In other, when I say no, no skin in the game, they aren't guaranteeing you anybody. This firm is more expensive. They are extremely more expensive in the long run, but they do bring local, they do bring that, that expertise of professionalism. And if the, the thing is, is if they don't get you anybody, it doesn't cost you a damn. But if they do get you somebody, it's basically whatever their salary would have been, and that would be 30% of what their salary would be.
So, we can, we can include them in the, when Sandy is exploring these options, I think it's worth looking in, in to, to this company as well?
The way you described them, and I don't know, but that's how, that's, that's how my, even the professional search firms I used to consider Cedar Rapids weren't the local ones that serve small cities. I, I use national firms that charge what you're talking about. They usually want percentages because cities don't like that, but they were in that range. I mean, you end up paying, I paid between $30,000 and $50,000 for, you know, for a six-figure director, and they did owe me a candidate that stayed a year. And, but the local, I've, I've used local firms, and so we could extend our fee kind of thing, our Q, where you're just looking for interest, to local firms. I researched some of them because we were looking for the same thing.
The thing I tried to stay away from when I did my search, I wanted, I didn't want somebody that did temp labor.
Sure.
They, the, the search firms that do temp labor, they're, they're not working with somebody that's at a professional level, and that's why I steered clear of them. And that's why I went after this Palmer Group. I don't know, know them other than when I talked to them on the phone in the last few weeks, two weeks.
There are a few of those firms in the metro, and they will tell you if they think they will be successful for what you're looking for, you know? So, I've had some...
So, we have a motion. Would you amend your motion to include?
Well, I think, I think it includes that.
Sure, yeah.
Right, we're, we're, we're just saying, start.
Dave, I, I think it's a great idea as well.
Okay.
We got, we got an idea.
So, I have a motion. Do we have a second for that motion to proceed with the executive search? Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion?
Just want to clarify, so Sandy's going to reach out to what's been kind of articulated here is Elizabeth Hansen, Brett Henson, and then we named a company, but I think we're expanding that to, to search firms not necessarily specializing in municipal recruiting.
I do, I mean, one of the things Councilmember Fisher mentioned, the accounting background, I, I like, I mean, I think that's where you might bridge, just like with ESG, where you're able to bridge, you know, local, you know, governments or private sector. So, I hear that.
So, a motion is second. Any further discussion for the...
Yeah, I just want to make, sorry, you're breaking up there. I just want to make sure, like, what David's saying is part of that, that, correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay, sorry, you're breaking up. All right, all right. Thank, thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll begin with the roll call vote. Jim Kane?
Aye.
Trevor Dersky?
Aye.
Samantha Peterson?
Aye.
David Fisher?
Aye.
EJ Bell?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Sandy, just to confirm, that's going to be for a city administrator and for a clerk?
That is my understanding.
I, I want to make sure we're all in agreement there. I would prefer if it's, if it's consensus and unanimous for one, but not two, that we figure that out.
No, that's good, yeah. I, I, my recommendation is that you do both together because I think you're going to have some crossover of applicants. And, and, so you're right. If, if that is not the consensus of the council, that I would offer them to give us proposals for both, I can certainly, you might have some firms that say, I'm only feeling good about one of the two, and they might, so maybe the, the firms may make a decision about giving us a proposal for one or both. But, you know, you have thoughts on that?
Let's do both and see what happens.
See, well, and I would say some might decline to do both. The other thing that...
That's the old way. That's the old way. Let's, let's go 100% and then let's argue about it later. I don't want to...
I, I prefer we don't do that. Unless we do have, unless, I mean, generally we do. I prefer that they, we look at both.
Okay.
Because, and the reason I say that is, I agree with Sandy, there's going to be crossover between those two jobs. And we might find somebody that we think fits immediately into a clerk position, but we not, don't want to make the decision to put her in, that person into a city administrator position, but we get them in here and we actually evaluate them for a short period of time and then we move them up. It's that potential.
Okay. That's, yeah, I mean, I think the...
The other thing that I currently with this is the need to write job descriptions for both of these. I can't mind.
One of the reasons I want to, I would really prefer to do both is like, is that we don't know what our applicants are, and we are in a position to fill either one of those. If we're going out for both, we can fill either one of them first and we'll get a person in the office sooner than if we narrow that search to one or the other.
I, I almost disagree. I just want to make sure we all agree.
Right. I appreciate that.
That's fine. We should, we got to start doing it that way.
Sorry, I assume so, yeah.
And I don't say agree, I just, whatever it is.
I do, I do what you're saying.
We're speaking as a unit of council.
To me, getting somebody in here as soon as possible, whatever, is going to help us, and I don't know.
I have one editorial comment that's probably, what Councilmember Fisher said, with that, with that firm he talked to said, you know, hey, I need everybody on board to do this search, you know, what you were talking about, kind of a council. I've heard that as well, that in, in this world where your bosses are elected officials, so sitting in my seat, it is imperative that you pick a firm that all six of you agree with. And then, because at the end of the day, I would never recommend someone in my seat take a job that all five of you don't vote yes. If no one wants to walk into a job and have one of your bosses...
I'm sorry, if I misled anybody, I was telling them I needed at least three votes in order to proceed with them, and I was wanting to get at least one council or two other council members to go with me. He understood that concept.
And what I'm saying is, yes.
Yeah, I understand, I just want to make sure that everybody understands where I was coming from.
I think it's fine. I think your point is ex...
I want that, but what you want, what you give us.
Oh, no, but in this seat, people with livelihoods who are going to change jobs, leave jobs, start a new job, are going to want that, at least on day one, you all agree that I'm the best candidate I want to hire. This is not when you want three, two, four ones. This is when you want five O's, and very few administrators, I'm not familiar with the clerk world, I don't know any administrators who would take a job for less than five O's. They just wouldn't do it. It's, you're putting your, I mean, maybe in a, you're not, you know, if you're, you're really needing the job, so then you probably don't want to hire them. So, any competitive candidate's not going to take a job that, where they're not wanted by all members of the, of the board.
So, moving on to any other items on Sandy's recommendation list? Select a cover?
Financial, budget and financials, HR maybe. I think there's still a conversation to be had on at least getting more information on outsourcing certain functions, especially when we know we're 60 to 120 days probably from having a placement, and that's just a placement, after 30 to 60 days from now, whatever time it takes us to get engaged with a firm to do this. So, yeah, you say, seems crazy, but January 1st of '25 is the first time somebody is, is in the seat ready to go. I think it's likely, you know, and those are the sorts of comments people say halfway, you know, six months out, and people are like, no way, it won't take that long. And then we get there and we're like, we aren't even ready yet. So, because it's happened just in the last six months that I've been here with things. I just think we need, I think it's a good idea to cover some of these to just explore what the cost is to outsource some of these critical functions that we, we can't do without while we're trying to get healthy staff-wise, so.
So, that's what I'm, right now I'm doing ESG, I'm going to see their proposals, you know, show them, show them with you. We can certainly go out for others, no question. I, you know, since they're already on contract, we would ask them first and, you know, even, and to see what we, what we think of, of that potential, but...
So, is that HR payroll then?
And what, what portion of financial reporting?
They're doing what I would call accounting part of financials. We still would need Teresa or somebody with her skills, really somebody strong in, in the public sector, Iowa-based, somebody who's working with Department of Management to do, you know, what I consider long-term financials.
So, financial planning, correct? And then probably the state filings?
Yes.
We need to do that.
Yes.
But this would be journal entries? ESG would do journal entries?
Yes. Teresa's going to work with us on journal entries. We have, we have no one that's in the department.
I guess, I guess what I'm saying is this, this report right here is awesome. Treasury report, I guess you'd probably call it. We need an actual budget.
Yep.
In addition to this.
Yep.
But it's how do we get those to whether or not we have a clerk in the office? Is what I'm proposing to work towards is potentially outsourcing.
And I will say, Tricia, ESG and I have been working on that specifically. I'll be better when we get into FY '25. You know, the '24 budget just wasn't followed, you know, the trends weren't right.
That's, this is what we've been seeing all this long time.
I think so. I want, you know, we look at July, I'm hoping July, the month of July, you'll be able to see actuals to budget. And we're going to start bringing, you know, FY '25 purchases and projects and that kind of stuff. So, you're going to want to see what you proved and what's in front of you and tie those two together and hopefully, you know, support, you know, those projects. You know, we have already met with Snyder, for example, our engineers, about all of those projects that are in FY '25 budget. And you're going to start seeing, I asked them to have some of that separated for the July 9th meeting, you know, things that are ready to go to bed, some of those concrete projects and things like that. So, you're right, it's going to be important for you to know what was in the budget and how to support this.
So, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're just planning on staying up to help us?
So...
Deliver that.
Yeah.
Okay. Got it. HR payroll.
So, wait a second. So, I'm kind of missed out on something. So, just to make sure I'm understanding, we are wanting to have them look at doing payroll and HR on top of all the accounting stuff, correct?
Correct. That's what I've asked them for.
Okay, that's, that, okay, that's what I've been asking for with my conversation. I want to make sure that's what we're doing.
Okay.
Until we get somebody in there, if it's there, we got to have that stuff no matter what, so.
And at this time, we haven't seen...
Thank you.
Correct. I would say, I asked for that and they're, they're working on it, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's a good thing.
Now, how about Teresa with the financial planning? Would we have anything that we need to work up with the contract with her or?
Yes, I, I have...
Proposal?
Like I said, she's going to be here this week, at the end of the week, and my hope is in that conversation, what I told her, that she's going to come here and work with me on end of year, but we're going to have that conversation. I don't know what she's interested in doing. She both works for the Iowa League of Cities, so what she did for us this, this spring, what season we're in, this spring was at the cost of the League of Cities, which is fantastic. And I think that's a great role for the League of Cities to support that kind of assistance. And my understanding is she was working with nine other cities doing what she was doing for us. What I understand she may be willing to do is that we can contract with her directly, which then we can actually identify service levels that we are seeking, you know, actual, you know, things that are a little more, you know, she's responsible for and not just assisting us doing them, but she is doing them on our behalf. And, and you could get some of that state reporting and that kind of stuff, especially if we went with a non-city person, you're going to have to have that. I mean, you just are. And maybe that takes the heat off of, you know, being able to open up who you can hire a little bit better if you have somebody contracted for a year to do that work and then you train them and they get, you know, very comfortable with it. And it's not, I mean, it's a learnable past, obviously, but the, the budget timeline or the finance, state of Iowa timeline doesn't stop because you hired them personally. You know, we get, you have to have, you know, mentions like budget and budget, you have to have those things done by the deadline, or I don't, I don't know what Department of Management deal looks like, but, you know, describing some penalties, but...
I think you're interested in that. I had had conversations with her before she retired.
Yeah, no, we, she's let me know.
She said she wanted to.
I just don't know if she has time.
That was part of what she was looking for in her retirement was helping through the East Iowa, but also doing some contract work where it was just...
And I think she shared that with you all as counsel. Yeah, I don't want you to act like you had different information than the rest of the council. The council heard that all from her and just trying to see what she's willing to put in writing, get in a contract with us, hopefully get back in front of you so that you can decide if that matches your needs.
Okay, does it wrap up that item, council? We can continue to tackle these items as they, as you come up in future meetings. Okay. Now, moving on to, anything else, Sandy, on that topic before we move on?
No.
Would you like us to? Okay. Okay, moving on to item number six, a resolution approving the contract amendment 1A with Soham Lang Architects LLC for revisions to the final design and construction documents for the Atkins fire station project, setting scope and funding. And before bringing this item up to the council, Dick Lang is, is asked to speak on, on this topic.
I sent a letter and I think you guys got a packet plus a couple of transcripts, that type of thing. I ran out of ink. Pretty blue colors. I don't think I have enough. If you would, thank you. I'm going to go through the letter. I don't know if EJ's got his on mine or not, but I think this fire station is very important. It's tearing the town apart because we can't come to an agreement. And I'm just going to go through the letter. It seems that someone has set a maximum price in the fire station and are not willing to consider all the financial information provided by the city's advisor, Superior Financial. Instead of being bought down on the price tag of the new station, the council should concentrate on what the actual cost of the tax pay would be given the various bond options presented by Superior Financial. The council approved a debt service levy of $1.40 per thousand for the '23, '24 fiscal year and $1.37 per thousand for the '24, '25 fiscal year. and a dollar thirty-seven per thousand for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. The twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year taxes have already been collected. Anyway, paid a year ago, September and this March. The levy for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, a part of the budget, will be collected this September and next March. This is based on issuing a four point five million general obligation bonds to be paid back over fifteen years. I've attached two items for your consideration. First chart shows the money available for the construction of the fire station and the city council chooses to issue four million dollars in GO bonds. With the FEMA insurance and bond sale, the city would have five point four million available for the construction of the station project. The second chart shows where the money would come from to repay the bonds in interest. Bad news is, you borrow four million, you got to pay back five point six million with the interest. But you can see that four point five million or eighty percent of the funding would come from TIF. This would not be possible if TIF, if, to use TIF, if the destruction of the old station were not caused by national disaster. I think that's where it come into the three million dollar limit. So, Spear Financial shows five hundred and fifty-five thousand funded from the Benton Lynn Fire District. The pre-tax levy that's been collected is a hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven sixty-three approximately. And the pre-levy for the next fiscal year would collect a hundred and thirty-seven, two thirty-seven. This leaves two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, five hundred, to be collected in the following two years. There is a couple of years strung, strung out, but this is also changed based on increased valuation. When Maggie, Spear Financial figured these calculations on these sheets, she factored in a one percent growth every other year, which I think we had growths of over three percent here recently, from one year to the next. So, so that leaves the two hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred to be collected in the following two years. The total amount of property taxes required to retire the bonds is five hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. This is what the citizens of Atkins have actually. For a five point four million dollar fire station, that's less than ten cents on the dollar. I also figured, I looked at the three million, okay, let's not have a million bucks off, everybody's worried about that. It would save a hundred and seventy-six, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, but you would be giving up a million dollars towards the station. I don't know, if you go out and borrow money from somebody and they said, you know, here's a million bucks, but you only have to pay me back a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, I don't know, is that a good idea or not? I think the five point four million with some of the changes that have been suggested, I don't think we need new glass doors in the private, nobody likes to clean windows anyway, so. And there's some other cuts that could be made. But I think my hope is that the council would proceed with approving the original plans and changes previously discussed, such as the glass doors, that type of thing, and provide the citizens and fire department members of the station that meets their needs and one they can be proud of for years to come. If the council owes the bids and they come back too high, the council has to write to reject bids and proceed with an alternate plan. That would save the forty thousand that you're proposing on spending and cut it off four to six weeks. I mean, we're in June, we'll be in July real quick. Another month or a month and a half, you're in August. By the time you get done, you're not going to get anything started yet this year. So, that's what I would hope you would consider. It just, I was amazed when I put this out on the charts, I mean, I looked at the other charts before, and it just blew my mind that we're paying back a little over half a million dollars for a five point four million dollar fire station. I don't understand. I, I did run the thing, you know, everybody's worried about what's it going to impact me? Well, I figured my taxes on my home at the dollar forty per thousand. I've already paid two hundred and fourteen dollars and eight cents towards the project. This next fiscal year, I'll pay another, based on the dollar thirty-seven, I'll pay another two hundred and nine dollars towards the fire station. The following year, it dropped to a hundred and sixty-three, sixty, and the remainder of the fifteen-year project will be another fifty-five dollars. For me personally, I would pay six hundred and forty-two dollars for the fire station over fifteen years. I did look at your members on the council, your valuation, it's available on the company's assessors website. Two of you have higher valuation than I do, two of you have lower, and one of them is basically the same. The mean valuation in town is two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. That means there's four hundred homes valued higher and there's four hundred homes valued lower. That's two hundred and forty-three. This is based on three hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred is what my assessed value on my home is. Not a big secret, like I said, anybody can look it up online. So, this is, to me, the argument that we can't make forces on the taxpayers, they can't afford to pay it. They've already paid one year, they're going to pay it the second year. I, I just, I don't understand why the council can't see that this is the bargain of the century. Thank you for your time.
All right.
I, thanks Dick for your comments. In the interest of fair dealing, I just want to make sure if, if folks want to propose to speak in the agenda, they can request that through the city hall?
I asked the same question today. Yes, at the beginning of the agenda, it says contact the city clerk if you plan to speak before the council on any, on an agenda item.
Okay.
And that's how it works here.
Go up and do his last three.
I got, no, I just want, I always want to clarify, and I think it's good for everybody else. All of us understand that's an option that's available as well, to, to get comments in, because I do think it's valuable. We did it in May at one of our meetings, we let, not, we crafted it so we could get the presentation of Soham Lang, then comments from the residents, then our discussion, and I think that's an order that can make a lot of sense.
Actually, the order I'm used to.
Yeah.
All right.
I, I get where Trevor's coming from for people to, to make comment and stuff like that, but as I've said before, residents don't like, they, they vote at the, you know, they vote in private and they will reach out to each other to talk about it, because they don't want to be ridiculed on Facebook, they don't want to be ridiculed by one side of town to the other. They just want to be left alone, but they also want to make a voice. So, I understand where Trevor's coming from, but that's, that's my perspective of people not coming up, because unfortunately in Atkins, if you are on the wrong side of something, you get yelled at a lot from both sides, so. You know, we're in here taking the heat.
City clerk for thirty-eight years, I got yelled at a lot, I'm used to it. In all, full disclosure.
I'm used to it, so.
Full disclosure, I was on fire department for four years. So, I kind of know where those guys are coming from, and I'll tell you what, you got a bunch of PO firemen that, this is not a top priority for this council.
Well, I don't know if that's fair.
That's their fee.
I hear that for clean because it was on the agenda.
No, 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 you misunderstood me. You completely misunderstood me. What I was asking about was should it go, actually go out to the voters and be voted on by the public? Because I guarantee you, you guys have, nobody in here has knocked on every damn door in this town. And I can say, I almost knocked on every door, and I talk to people, and I guarantee you, they don't want the five or six million dollars. And nobody, nobody has been able to tell me, nobody has been able to tell me why we need a six million dollar fire station or a five million dollar fire station.
Where's this number coming from?
Other than what the rumors in this town and what we've heard is that under Norway and other communities, that there's stuff all through, we've got Atkins all ready to go, we got a big fancy fire station in case the smaller towns can't handle it, we would be a central fire station. And I've heard that from multiple people on the fire station. And if that's true, you need to start speaking that up, because our town of Atkins cannot be paying the potential for that to happen down the road. Atkins needs to pay for Atkins. And if that happens down the road, we'll worry about it down the road. But that, that's the kind of stuff I've been hearing from numerous people, Nick, and others, and it's going on for the last two freaking years. And I've heard it from a company alone.
As, as far as the.
If you present it as a six million dollar fire station, nobody's going to want the six million dollar.
It doesn't matter, we've already talked about four point five million.
Well, can you, let me finish, please?
Where is this?
Nope.
He can't hear you, he probably can't hear you.
I can hear him, I can hear him.
Okay, what I'm trying to say is, if you present it to the people and say you can have a six million dollar fire station for five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, who wouldn't go for that? I don't know, maybe I'm missing something here. The whole thing is, somebody pulled the number out of the air and said, said Center Point, build a station for four point two or three point six, or I don't know what it is, and I don't care.
Two million.
We're getting, for half, less than half of the two million. Yeah, and I don't know what they had a bond or what it actually cost.
They had a bond for two million.
But what did they have to pay it back?
We actually went to the fire station and looked at it. They told us that we were still funding from the fire station, from our fire department, and talked to them. Or we could have designed their company.
Doesn't raise your taxes, comes out of your pocket, it doesn't raise your taxes.
Okay, now, I would want to correct EJ's comment that the committee did, did visit Soham's fire station and Center Point's fire station during the process on the investigation, but I think.
I, 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 no, 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 I said, no, Bruce, I said, people from our fire station, our, our volunteers, Dick, and I mean, Dan and all those guys. I, I understand, of course, Soham Lang's going to go there, they're fire station, they built it.
Well, anyway, we'll, we'll move on that. And we appreciate your, on the financial side of things, any, just while we're in conversation mode here, any questions for Dick on the fire station funding?
I do have one more thing I want to emphasize, and if you look at that sheet, it shows the rural fire board paying five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars towards the station. The city of Atkins is paying five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And when we had that meeting back in February, there were people there that said, why is the rural board only paying five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, that, that isn't enough, well, they're maxed out on their levy. That limits them how much they can pay. Now, we're looking at, oh gee, we're both paying the same, but all of a sudden, Atkins is still too high, the city is still too high, I don't understand, I really don't.
There's some trade-offs on that. On the three and the three and a half, the township isn't done paying after year three. They get the money back. The forty, the forty thousand, Sandy, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, it's, they pay a lot less. I mean, so, so you're using the four million dollar bond as, as a base, as a funding basis. There's no way to do this where we don't get into the numbers, so, like, it's just what we got to do.
I love numbers, I love numbers.
So, you get to five point six total, how do you still get to any option in option A? That's six or six point six million?
We don't know, because until we go out for bids, we're not going to know what it is. Soham Lang has estimated the six, six, six. They have overestimated every one of their projects for almost ten years now. Some of them have come in, the averages, that they are over by ten percent or greater. Some of their projects, once they went out to bid, have actually come in over twenty percent under what they estimated. So, that's what I tried to say on May twenty-eighth. We need to get numbers, we're in a position now, three and a half years we've gone, and these firemen are upset. They've put up with a whole lot of problems getting in and out of the station. It's difficult for them, but they've done it. We are, this May is the first time we've been in a position to go out for bid and get numbers. Maybe we can't make the numbers work, I don't know, but if we get the numbers, then we can see if they make them work. I, our first responders deserve everything that we can give them. I know there's limits on what we can give, but this town is in a period of growth. When you're in a period of economic growth and you need to borrow money, you're putting forth efforts to increase your capital. You borrow what you can afford, and you make sure as you spend it, you get maximum amount of what you're putting out. To go cheap is always more expensive in the long run, it's very popular.
Tell me, tell me anything in that statement you haven't already said. And I'm, and I tried to get everybody on five million dollars. Couldn't hold it together. Couldn't hold it together, just a second.
My problem.
Let me finish, please. Six point six is six, please. And we're still, right now, going three, two, one way or the other. And so, I, I, there needs to be acknowledgement that there is serious division here, and, and you can keep pointing back to the same talking points, it gets you nowhere. Both sides, we're talking around each other. We're not hitting, we're not hitting the core issues somehow, after all this conversation.
So, did we ever try to reach the four point five million dollar? Did we ever try to go after that and make that an option? Never.
Dave, just.
That's not, that's, that's what, that's my whole point. We didn't try, and you know, in all actuality, I really truly believe we should be at three million dollars or less, because that's what the statistics, statistics told me, that's what my, the information that I had available to me by experts told me it should be at. But again, I don't understand why it would be that much, and nobody's been able to tell me why we need to spend five point one or any number. I'm just saying, if you're at four point five million dollars, then you add the one point four on top of that, then you don't have to have anything from a tax burden going back to the people.
That's not true. On the three million dollar bond, you've still got three years of, of additional incremental tax.
And my other point is, my other point has been from the beginning, is when we're trying to, we've got all these other problems that we have with water and so on and so forth. I realize, I realize that Dick's point is we should put that on the water bill, that that should be a different bar, that should, we should borrow different money. I'm sorry, but if we try to increase our water bill again, we're going to have even bigger issues with the city hall people trying to get money out of the people. But what I, I, what we're doing is we're limiting ourselves on what we can borrow. The more we borrow, the less we can borrow, the less we can borrow for the other problems.
All right, that's. On, on GO, correct, yeah, on, on the general obligation capacity. And, and I, I am concerned, I get the, the idea, I agree with it from a clean financing standpoint, of let the enterprise services stand on their own, use special revenue bonds, it should be self-financing.
That's a state law.
But my understanding is not a requirement, because we use GO bonds to, to do, to handle enterprise projects in the past somehow.
So, and we shouldn't, that's what the law said.
But how does our water rate compare to surrounding towns?
Some high, some low.
That's not my, I mean, I, I think we're generally higher. I have concern about.
We are definitely, we are, we're higher than all the surrounding towns' waters.
And that's, that's what.
That's well-known.
That's what I've seen, and, and again, I mean, if somebody proved me wrong, that's fine, I, I need to have the right information, but that's what I've seen. And so, so then I have concern about special revenue capacity from the standpoint of the water rate. And what's, what's politically feasible, really, you know? What can we actually justify, what, what can we as a council in a unified way decide needs to happen? And so, that's where I do, I do share the view, like, there might be some GO capacity that, that has to stand in to handle some of this, this, these issues. I mean, we've got over five million dollars in water main, in water main replacement that's identified right now. And, and I mean, I'm sure that's not unique. I, I would imagine that any of these towns that middle of nineteenth century establishment, right, have this same sort of problem, but we got to be thoughtful about it. And, and we do, I think, have a unique situation, and it should be viewed as a benefit. This town has two of its own wells, we have redundant water sources, we're, we're soon to have redundant backup power on those water sources, and we have our own water treatment. Not a lot of towns can say that, there's a self-reliance aspect here that Atkins has built, and I don't hear much talk about that or even self-congratulation or much awareness. Perhaps that makes it more expensive to have that self-reliance versus relying on Pao Sheek or Cedar Athens or anybody else. Just want to throw that out there, we're all way off on a tangent, but.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Doug.
I was going to.
I was gonna jump on the, kind of Trevor's last comment there. Council discussions have traded a long ways from the agenda item, and, and it's good discussion, I'm not trying to interfere with the good discussion, but by code, you have to kind of stick to the agenda, and I'm not sure you even have a motion on the floor right now related to the Solon Lang contract. Most of the discussion has been around other items, kind of dance around that. So, I would just try to focus you back to the agenda item.
Good point, Doug, thank you very much.
And, and before we jump on that too, I would say, while, while you folks were talking with Sandy earlier, I did get ahold of Maggie Berger, and, uh, just to confirm a couple of things, and, uh, after speaking with her, looking at the code, um, and understanding a little bit better what the city previously did with regard to financing, uh, all the appropriate steps were taken that would allow the city to borrow up to four and a half million dollars for the fire station, reverse referendum timeframe has passed, the city council can always choose, um, and when I say this, I don't fully understand all the timelines you're looking at, but if the council was in a mind to say, you know what, even though we don't have to, and we've gone through all these appropriate steps to date, we wanna kind of turn the clock back and we wanna put this to the voters, you can do that. There might be some time constraints involved that might interfere with FEMA funding and other things that hurt, so I don't know the answers to that, but you always have the freedom and flexibility to put something like this to the voters if you want to. However, you've taken all the appropriate steps to date, um, giving the voters the opportunity to do a reverse referendum, which they didn't choose to do. So you have the legal authority, according to my conversation with Maggie and looking at the code, um, to borrow up to four and a half billion as actually, uh, general corporate purpose. Um, I think there's, you know, as a discussion earlier from the gentleman who spoke earlier, a lot of the money that would be, uh, brought into this project would be urban renewal in nature, so, just to make that point clear, to clarify my comment. Obviously, you can choose to, to go a different route, but right now, where things sit, the council previously approved the, that your couple meetings ago, four and a half billion project, and tonight, your only agenda item on this issue is really whether to, uh, proceed with an amendment with Solon Lang.
Do we need a motion to continue the discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Um, well, I will make a motion to approve resolution number 01A with Solon Lang, which is a contract amendment, um, to revise the, the fire station designs.
I think we need to have the conversation hammering out the terms of this resolution. So, second, we need to have a discussion.
Okay. Uh, so like I mentioned before, um, I just think this fire station project is too important to push any further. Um, that's why I, I asked for it to be revisited tonight. There's obviously very, very strong opinions on both sides of, of this issue. We saw that tonight, and, and we hear that out in the public as well, but, um, what, what I've, where my head is at, and what I'm trying to do in working with, uh, bringing this resolution and this contract amendment back to the table, is I believe that option B, which is the option that the council approved on May 28th, I believe, is a good way, a good path forward in order to not miss this construction season. I believe that if we can work collaboratively as a council with Solon Lang, that we can, we can put plans together for a building that this community can be proud of, there'll be good plans, it's not going cheap, it's, it's still a good, will be a good solid plan, and something that will meet the needs of the fire station, the community, and, and again, something that I believe we can be proud of at the end of this. It does bring the cost estimate down, which there are some, you know, there are a piece of the community that that's important to. So, we bring the cost down, we don't miss the construction year, there'll be good plans that we can be proud of at the end. And the, the piece that's really important to highlight, in my opinion, in this revised resolution, is that, um, the focus on working collaboratively with the council and inviting all five of us and the mayor into these discussions with Solon Lang to, to work through the redesign process. Um, I just think it's a way to, to come together and compromise a little bit. I don't think that any person in this town, or in the rural areas also, there are people outside of the, the city limits that, that care that this project moves forward. Nobody's gonna get everything that they want, I think we all have to bend a little bit, and this is a path forward to do that. And that's why I've asked for this contract amendment to be reconsidered. So, I believe that this is an opportunity for us, all, all five of us to come together. Um, I'm hoping for that anyways. Um, and we obviously have lots of opinions, differing opinions in this group, but this is a chance for us to, to move forward, all have a say, all have a seat at the table, and, and build a building that we can all be proud of in the end. So, that's where, where my thoughts are, and I'm hoping that a few of you, or, or all of us, can agree to, to move forward with supporting what was passed on May 28th and voting to proceed with this contract amendment and directing Solon Lang to redesign. Those are my thoughts.
Again, I, 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 uh, believe that the fire station is very important as well, and I've said that since the beginning. Um, my whole hang-up has been the cost of the project. And when I say, um, when I, I was the one that brought it to the city council, and actually brought it to light, when the fireman told me that the co, cost of the project was now 6.1, and then I got called a liar in this meeting. And I was, because it was 6.6. And, um, but I, I'm trying to understand, um, from my perspective, the cost of things and the increase in cost that has not been communicated to me. And that, I, I, I want reasons why.
Where were you the last three years?
Jim, he is trying to speak, let him speak.
Let's do that. David, are you starting this one? I don't believe anybody knew the cost of the project the last three years, until I brought it to the city council, and that was from people that were on the actual fire department, on the board that was designing it. So I, again, got it brought to me, and I got called a liar. So I don't think anybody knew the actual cost, including every, every citizen. They just knew it was between four, five and six million dollars. And guess what? I heard a lot of negative feedback from the citizens. And you know what? I, it's not about me, it's not about anybody other than the citizens of this town. We can say, we want, this is what I think, well, it ain't what I think, it's what the citizens think, and I listen to the cities, citizens, point blank.
To your point, there are lots of citizens that are on the total opposite side of that too, so we do need to take those voices into consideration that send letters of support for option A, you know? So I hear what you're saying, because I agree with you. I think that's what we're here to do, is represent the citizens, but.
I think it could have all been avoided. It could have all been avoided.
The citizens that you're talking about, which we need to listen to, they're not all on this side either, but this is a way that we can compromise and, and.
This all could have been avoided, if communication was out there, if there would have been, um, the leadership that, that received the information from the council and actually implemented it, we wouldn't be sitting here discussing this today. And you know what? I'd be sitting over there going, let's build that thing, and I wanna be proud of it. I wanna drive by here and go, you know, I was part of that city council. And you know what I'm gonna, when I drive by that, what I gotta think now? And I got told it's not a Taj Mahal at 6.6 million dollars. What was it?
Well, and I would say that, that the engineers' estimates have been presented at two public meetings, and we've had open houses, uh, we've actually had four public meetings, but those engineering estimates come out at different points in the design process. Um, and those have been provided as public documents. But Jim, did you have?
Like I said, we've been pushing three years and 10 months. I've been on this project since day one. I've been on the council for two and a half years, I've gone to planning meetings with the people that did the planning. We did not get this jammed down. The people that did this planning were citizens of this town that pay taxes. There is nothing elaborate in that fire station. It's a good plan, it's a basic plan, it's an expensive plan, but that's what things cost nowadays. This resolution we've got before us now is going to spend $40,000. That's the only thing it's gonna guarantee. We don't have a Plan B, we've got a concept. In order for it to be a plan, it has to be something on paper that we can take to bid.
Which we're working towards by the September 1st.
Given the fact that Solon Lang is going to have to deal with this council at every step of this, I don't think it's going to happen this fall. That's my concern. In the May of this year, we had a plan that could take the next step and go to bid. If we go down this path, we are not moving forward. We're moving in a different direction. At the point where this plan that we're going to put $40,000 in is ready for bid, then we are at a step that we can move forward. Will the council take that step? I don't think they will, that's my opinion. I don't think this council will agree to ever do it. I think we're gonna go another year, two years down the road, and we're not gonna have a fire station. And I think that these firemen are going to think really hard every time they have to answer a call, and give up time with their family, and give up time with their school projects, to think about whether they really wanna answer that call. There's nothing that tells them, those are volunteers.
Why are we talking about this today, Jim?
I've been talking about it since day one.
Because you voted no. You voted no. You voted no, that's why we're here.
Yes.
That's why we're talking about it today. It was a done deal.
$40,000.
It was a done deal.
What's a done deal? It's not a done deal. We're spending $40,000.
It was a done deal, and you voted no.
And we're not gonna get anywhere. That's, it's not moving forward. And if we go this route, I don't think we will move forward this year.
It is, it is, in my opinion.
That's my opinion, I've got.
Okay, but.
I said what I'm gonna say.
So, in my opinion, it is a way forward, because we don't have a way forward with option A.
That's what I was trying to get at. I mean, why, why can't, why can't we all, all of us, stop using the word six million dollars or more? It's just not happening. I don't know what else I've gotta say. I, just, just, there's five, there's five votes, just count. The people, the positions that people have articulated. It's not happening. It, we can't get, we can't get enough there. Sorry, Sandy.
No, I, I totally agree. I think that's why we went down to put the work in, to try to find something that was, you know, where each, each side of this issue had to bend a little bit, and I think the plan that, it's not just a number that we pulled out of the sky, it's an estimated total project cost that Solon Lang has given us for option B, which was passed on May 28th, so it's, it is a, it's an estimated project cost, but it is, you know, it's got, they worked that all out, so, it's a good option, it's, I agree, Jim, I, I'd like to give, you know, I'd like to build a building that the fire station needs and, and that we can be proud of, and I think that this plan is just that. We just need to, we need to have, we have to compromise. And that's what we're doing, I think, with this resolution. It states in here that we'll work collaboratively on the option B and explore some other things by, so that we're ready to go out to bid by September 1st, so we won't miss this construction season, which I've heard over the last two weeks a million times, is that we, all we wanna do is not miss the construction season. So this is the path forward, not to miss the construction season, to take advantage of this construction season, this is the path.
I'm gonna make one more statement, and then I'm done. If we move forward with this, no matter what we do here tonight, three members of this council can vote to put Plan A to bid. That's a fact. The paperwork is all there. If we find, moving forward, that we're rubbing into problems and something doesn't happen, three members could put Plan A to bid. That's, that's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
The residents of this town, do not want to spend that kind of money?
Do we have a second?
We, we do, we do, but, but I've, I've got, I've got concerns before we vote, because I'm, I'm still hearing the same thing, that we just went through the last one, potentially gonna happen again. And so I'm not, I'm, I, I even, I don't, I don't support doing that. Like, we.
I, 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 oh, go ahead, Trevor.
We, up until this point, actually covered a fair amount of ground. I think we made a lot of good decisions, I think we had us all kind of in alignment up, up until now. And then, we lost it, over, over this, over this project. And what I'm hearing right now is, is, where are we at if we approve this, and then, design takes too long and we can't get it anymore, and then, then we gotta, we gotta approve, what's the approval after this to send out to bid? Will we have to do any, have another vote?
The city council is required to approve plans and specs, the plans and specifications, which is the.
Once the design comes back, right?
What I was saying right before that, is the council has to work with the architects. I mean, that's what we're very, trying to be, I was trying to be very clear about, is that this isn't a, you make the contract, they come back with plans and specs. They're gonna come back and expect you to be timely, meet with them in work session, them show you plans, give you some options, you can do it this way, you can do it that way, and you have to give direction, you know, yep, you're on the right track, boy, we're hoping X would happen or Y would happen. There is more to come before you get to plans and specs to make sure.
And every one of those steps is going to require three people to move it forward.
I do not think that would be a voting process. I, what I picture, um, the iterations with.
How are they going to take directions since they don't have a majority?
Is consensus of the council, just like budget work sessions, but look how that happened. Look what happened with that.
But the point is, is that we will all be there, you know, anyone that is willing to, to be a part of the process, we all have a chance to give input and build consensus. I think that's the process that we've been looking for this whole time, is bringing everybody's ideas to the table. I don't know why anybody would, uh, disagree or, or not, not want that.
It may be worthwhile to, to note the differences between this resolution and the prior resolution.
Oh, well, I, I think, and you can help me, but the, the prior resolution was, um, we as a council decided to move forward with option B, and with an add-on alternate, potentially, depending on where bids come in, to add the drive-through bay, or driveway to Third Avenue, I believe, right? That's what was approved on May 28th. So what we're approving today, or reconsidering with different verbiage and, and some changes, is the contract amendment for Solon Lang, so that's the difference.
I would, right, like to, yeah, I, the resolution, um, was changed to, um, utilizing, whereas utilizing this design contract amendment, the city council desires to work collaboratively with Solon Lang to complete a fire station design and explore the option to provide a forefront apron of approximately 45 feet while meeting the desired total estimate. while meeting the desired total estimated project cost of a maximum of $5,78,288,000 and 19 cents. The city council will meet as needed to approve this design by September 1st, 2024, within the timeline established by Resolution 24, 2024-58. Those two paragraphs were added, changed it from the last one, that didn't include an apron, didn't specifically call out the need for the council to work with Solon Lang on that design.
Can, can we get support for the idea that we'll all work together on the redesign? And I think it's possible, we look at some other options, we have the conversation with Solon Lang. People are not comfortable entering into this agreement with a maximum of $5 million. Could we consider 4.75? Knowing full well, that's what goes up to bid, that's total project cost, that's not even, that's, that's adding more numbers that won't be in the bid. All the things we already, we already discussed, but can we...
Here we are, we're going down in numbers again.
It's what we have to do, Jim. I, I don't know how else to put this, I like...
We're just keep getting cheaper and cheaper, and it's going to cost. It's not going to last as long, the firemen are not going to be happy.
I just want to say something. So if we go back to the 2020, and we don't have the deratio at all, we would have a fire station where it was at, and it would continue to meet the needs. No matter what building, even if it's at $3 million, or $4 million, or $5 million, it would be better than what they had before. Updated, new, and on top of that, the public didn't get the full vote. They would, it would have went out to them. They would have gave you a hard number. If we would have said 4.5 million, it would have been 4.5 million. We wouldn't have went a penny over, or $3 million, or $2 million, whatever we would have decided back then. Right now, we're at 6.6 million, Jim. It's not going to get there, the town doesn't want it.
We're not at 6.6 million.
We're not talking about that option.
I know, that's what I'm saying. It's, I, I know that, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's never going to get there.
But...
I'm just going back in time to see, if we would have had what we had before, the discussion would have been different. Right now, 4.5 billion is like, no matter what we build, even if it's at 4.5 billion, it's going to be far superior than what was there before. That's all I'm saying.
Well, the, the situation we're in was, is we, we don't have a fire station. And the task is to reconstruct one, if, if that's wish of the council.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that's where all the animus on, it sounds like. If you're just saying the fire station reconstruction, the idea of a fire station.
Correct. We have to focus on that task, completing that. Even the old station, that's just not here anymore.
Right, so, right, so I was just going to throw out, just to try and, again, I...
I think we can work towards that, Trevor, but as far as the...
Well, I don't know, I can't speak for others, that's, that's the problem. That's what I'm trying to, to figure out.
But the contract amendment...
We don't even maybe have support for this at a maximum of $4.5 million. I'm not hearing any ideas.
The reason we use the, the $5 million...
You got a yes vote for me if I get 4.5.
The reason we use the $5 million...
If you change your resolution to 4.5...
David, hold on a minute.
I'm up. Yes.
We can't, we, the reason we use the number we did is because that was the hard, the estimated project total cost that was approved on May 28th, that Solon Lang has already worked through. I'm not comfortable just throwing out a number, really. I'm, I'm willing to come to those meetings and discuss options to, and, and come to consensus through the process.
I found what consensus is all about.
Can you just, I think, I mean, I, I'm honest about that, like, I'm willing to...
Can I clarify something about the resolution now? So, Solon Lang gave us a contract amendment for your consideration for $39,700. That price was determined by them based on what we asked them for. And that is the completion of the eight-foot reduction on the bays, on the south side of the bays, and a reconstruct, a redesign civil of the parking lot. I, I was asked to ask them for a, you know, if it was a different number, what would, if it was, if the value of the station was different, knowing that we asked them, what can be built this year, how much can you remove from the state, you know, from the project to get it the cost lower, and this is what they provided us. I think if you change the dollar amount of the station, or the design of the station, the dollar amount of the contract amendment should be considered to be changed as well.
Well, we'll probably just have to make that, right, I, I think that's fair. And I, sorry to cut you off, Sandy.
No.
I, I just, to me, I don't know if there's anything more important to this town than getting this council to start working five to nothing. Not one single individual project. And I mean, I'd love to have that conversation with anybody that disagrees with me. I just think that is one of the things tearing this town apart, is the fact that the council itself is tearing itself apart. That's why, even if it doubles, it even turns into $80,000 in additional, if that makes individuals feel comfortable, they've done their diligence, and they've gotten this to where they feel it's a responsible total cost, I am saying I'm willing to hear that. I, I don't know the way forward, it's uncertain. It's uncertain we can even get there. But, but we got to start thinking in terms of, how do we get the five votes, instead of how do we get three votes?
I would like to see what it would cost to have the building at 4.5, like, a design at 4.5. If you want to add back to this resolution to see what that would look like, and the cost factor, and I, I know, I, I've asked about it. I know they gave that number of the $39,000, or whatever it is, $40,000. I understand it's probably going to change, and it obviously can, would be longer wait, and heavy reconstruction. I'm, I'm okay with that. I just want to know, you know, and I could be wrong. I'm willing to admit that. But if I'm wrong, I'll... Look like at 4.5 billion.
I, I don't...
Well, I was originally voted on, that's what I'm just trying to say, that's what I'd like to see. If we could get a resolution today to get to, so that we can see what a redesign would look at 4.5, 5 million, you know, as an option, so that we can see what that would be? That's what I would like.
Well, at this point, we have a motion and a second on this matter. I guess I'll... If anyone in the council would like to call for a vote on the, on the motion on the floor?
How can we add, how can we add language to this, asking for feasibility of a design concept at $4.5 million?
You could make a motion to amend the resolution. As I'll call upon our legal counsel.
Can we still, I mean, I, if it's not, not, okay, go ahead, Doug.
I make the motion.
I was reviewing the specific language of the resolution as you folks were talking. Since the resolution approved, well, let's see here. May 28th, 24, Resolution 20, 240508, to select and design a proposed timeline, whatnot. So kind of, the resolution ties it to this recent approval by the council, but yet, you know, this document is really only agreeing to amend your contract with Solon Lang to sit down and work with them on design changes. You know, I don't think even it's written during the process of the council working with Solon Lang on the fire department. I think you're wide open to look at any and all changes whatsoever. And if you can reach some consensus, and I know this came up earlier, well, we have to vote on every potential change. I would say I'd agree with Sandy, some of the other comments. You don't really, so long as there's kind of a consensus, yeah, let's look at that, let's try that. I guess if you ever get to a point where you absolutely can agree, then you can vote. If your vote says, yep, let's go that way, then you do. But I guess my, my point is, even as this is written, if you move forward with approving this resolution, amending the terms with Solon Lang, you can review anything and everything with them about the current plans and specs for that building that might make sense to the, to the majority of you. So I don't think you're locked into only looking at those limited things that brought it down to a 5.2 million project. The things you can look at that come up during these discussions, I think you're open to that. You know, if it makes sense, makes some of you more comfortable. You know, the way I look at resolutions in council packets are, they are a draft. They aren't necessarily final. Now, if they change so dramatically that instead of approving a contact amendment with Solon Lang, you, you know, terminate the agreement with Solon Lang and approve a contract with another one, I'd say you can't do that, you know, that wasn't on your agenda. But adding a provision to this resolution to note that during meetings of Solon Lang Architect Firm, you will, the discussions are open to consider any and all potential changes that might make sense. And that may not be pretty language, but I hope you understand my point, that I, I don't think the language currently limits you to only discuss a few things. I think you can discuss anything. But if you wanted to add some language to make that more clear, adding a phrase to that effect would be fine.
Does that answer your question, Trevor? Does that, does that broaden the basis of support for this resolution?
Let me throw this, Trevor, let me throw this out, one more thing, I guess. When I'm looking at the fourth paragraph down, and again, I know you're trying to get to a point where, before this gets voted on, there's an idea that it might actually pass. So the fourth, whereas paragraph, just reading the end of that, it says, "Explore the options provided for a front apron of approximately 45 feet while meeting the desired total estimated project cost of a maximum of $5,078,288.19." That's where we could add additional language if you wanted to, or lesser amount, you know, upon review and consent by the council of additional changes or modifications to the project design, something to that effect. I mean, my understanding, and Sandy or others can tell me if I'm wrong, but the $5,078,000 number, I think it's appropriate to mention because that was already approved in a prior resolution. And where those, as you're going that direction anyway. So, I think leaving that is appropriate, but adding language right after it, to make it clear in this resolution that you all agree that you're not necessarily going to be limited to that. And it does say the maximum cost, so arguably, you're already, you know, could be looking at $4.5 million, because all this says is maximum cost of $5,078. So, not to belabor that issue, but if you wanted to add some clarifying, clarifying language to be sure everybody understood, particularly those that want to shoot for a lower number, that that's on, that's on the table, if, if you can find things that work for the consensus majority of you during discussions with Solon Lang.
I think that should help quite a bit.
So the language I have to Doug's point is in that last paragraph, maximum of $5 million, whatever, or lesser amount upon review and consensus of the council through modifications of the design. Is that the language that you're considering?
I think the only other thing is, how do we, I, I just would like to express my desire to put a priority on some designs, some concepts, some initial feasibility from Solon Lang coming in at 4.5.
You do want to?
Yeah, we need to see that, we, we need to explore that. Because that's, that's apparently the tipping point, and we don't even have anything right now. It's just a question mark of what 4.5 looks like.
I, my, I mean, Doug's point too, but my condition would be then to give me direction to work with Solon Lang, to come back to you with a contract amendment and a resolution that matches, you know, that has words in it that says 4.5, because I think that is a different ask than this of Solon Lang. Or, to your point earlier, unless you want to take out the contract amendment and say, you know, the dollar amount of contract amendment, and say, we want to have Solon Lang devise a contract amendment to work with us on this, you know. Without them here, I'm not comfortable changing what they've offered to provide for us. Because there's no, I have no information about what kind of design would be required, you know, how much time and money it would take to change the design, what that change in design, if you had months to a contract to work over the winter, you know, say you're going to put out bid in January or February, which is great, you had six months of contract, and we're talking to them the whole time, your contract amendment increases. I mean, it just is going to, because you're going to use that time, which time is money to...
That's what I was thinking.
The other piece of this to be not concerned with, but the council already approved at your last meeting, action to redesign this down to that $5,078 number by doing some specific things. If we go too far with this resolution, and obviously you can choose to not approve this or go another route with it, but, but in a way, what you're really also doing is reconsidering or changing the terms of that other previously approved resolution by what you're doing with this resolution. So, if, if you send Sandy back to the drawing board on this resolution, you may also be looking at a reconsideration of the resolution passed two weeks ago to move forward with these amendments, taking it down to the estimated maximum cost of $5,078.
I think we should stick with what we passed on May 28th. I think it's a good plan forward, it is a compromise. And I'm still in favor of this contract amendment and working collaboratively together and having conversations. I think that's the, the right way to go tonight, and I feel like I've done all of it in as well.
Well, we do have a motion and a second, so that brings us to the vote. So at this time, there's been a lot of discussion on this topic, and it's time to take that, that step. So with the roll call vote, David Fisher?
I abstain. I'm not sure on what basis. I've already voted for it once, and I'm, I've, I'm not going to change my position. That would make me a hypocrite if I did.
Yeah, abstaining would require a conflict of interest, I believe, Doug, is that correct?
I'll say, I'll say two, I'll say two things. You can't force anybody to vote. Typically, an extension is to be supported by a conflict of interest. An extension without a conflict, then Dave would still count as an existing council person sitting there when we decide how many votes we need. If he abstains because of a conflict of interest, it's then as if he's not there, and we calculate our majority based upon a four-person council, which might not change the results in the end anyway, but you can't force anybody to vote. But typically, that's another thing that's usually covered in rules of procedure for cities, the process and obligations of a council member when abstaining.
All right, so...
So it's a, it's a no vote, it gets counted as a...
Present and not for.
Not for, yeah.
Okay. Trevor Dersky?
Yeah.
Samantha Peterson?
Aye.
EJ Bell?
I'm going to pass for a moment.
Okay. Jim Kane?
Aye.
And then, returning back to Counselor Bell, EJ Bell?
I just want to say how much time and money has been wasted on the... I just want to say how much time and money is being wasted over the last two weeks for this vote to be changed. So, obviously, someone was set at either 6.6 million and wastes a lot of time and money. So I just don't get it. So obviously, the principles that they forthwith that they had, but somebody got back in line, so, anyway, I'm a no, unfortunately. I tried to give what I wanted to do, so.
So the motion carries. Three to two. Resolution is approved.
I don't, Jim's gonna pay for all the extra money and time and hours from everybody.
That's not a.
It's opinion.
Okay.
Waste a lot of my time.
Okay, moving on to reports. Mayor's report completing this week, hopefully, the hydrant replacements. Fire hydrants in the water system. I believe that work's been going very, very hot, but at least the rain has swelled up here in this location. Streets also are impacted by the weather, and those are moving along as well. Consult the map for the location of the street work and maintenance. That's the chip seal streets on the website. Be handy, and the thing there that helps a lot is to get the parked cars off the, off the streets at those locations, so those crews can get in and get out, and that helps everything run very smoothly. And the hot weather is a very good thing for that process, too, by the way. It helps get a, give a better product. I attended the landfill commission last week. So at this time, interim, interim city administrator's report.
Just to add a little bit to the, we were talking about, our staff really wanted to give kudos to the Kenway workers that's doing those hydrant replacements. It was a tough job that isn't easy, and it's really hot out there. So, thanks to citizens, especially for the patience, we've gotten a lot of calls. There, we've sent, we've put out notices, we've put notices on doors and things like that, but it's still surprising when the water doesn't turn on. That's why cities can be taken for granted, because your wires aren't on. So we appreciate the patience of people as we try to upgrade those systems. The other, besides chip sealing that's happening, is lime painting is Thursday and Friday. Street parking, so that's gonna go up on the website, and we'll sign it now. And then two more things. One is, the City of Atkins has a fireworks ordinance. So, starting at 9:00 AM on Friday, June 28th, through 11, uh, every day from 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM, from June 28th, Friday, to Thursday, July 4th, fireworks are allowed to be discharged on private property, not public property, by, you know, responsible individuals. You can see the ordinance online. I put it back up there so that you can read kind of the guidelines of how to use it. It means not on city property, so not parks and all those kinds of things on your own property or property that you have permission, the owner, to do it on 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM. I hope that goes well. And then finally, the Water Quality Report for 2023 is required by the DNR. Cities our size are able to not send out the report individually to users, but make it available. So it's been published in the Cedar Rapids Gazette. It is posted here and at the post office, and we are mailing this week a notice with your water bill to tell you that you can go online and read that Water Quality Report as well, which is required, and you see every city doing it. There's a link on our website now if you want to go and take a look at it, and that's all I have.
Okay. Council reports.
Yeah, a citizen reached out to me and said, basically, called me out on a, one of the things that I ran on. And basically, what I ran on was also building bridges. And basically, what their point was, if you don't vote yes, you're not building the bridge. Well, my interpretation of building bridges is working to identify and promote best practices and policies. Just wanted to make that point. The other.
Yeah, I have a couple things. I have a cou, I have a couple things as well. Sandy, you know, there was some reports out there about, something about the water and the shut-off and stuff, and I'm kind of getting in debate about that, whatever happens, happens. On, on the, on the website, I'm not on the website, on the Facebook page, whoever's running it, if they, because it was a request, asked like a few people, if they could put, with the hydrant stuff going on, to have a link where people can, so people could see that on the, on the Facebook page, and then for the hydrants, whatever's going on, and then the other is for the fireworks going on. So people don't tend to go to the website, they go to the Facebook city page, so they can click on that as well.
Well, you know what, councilmember, I can do that. Wait, can I give you feedback about that? Because the social media policy of the city council is to use the Facebook page only to direct people to the website. The Facebook page for the City of Atkins is not a communication tool, back and forth. So, I, I don't know that we put out there to go to, I, I know we put out some of it to go to the website, but I, we are not gonna engage the public on Facebook. That's not our social media policy.
No, 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 no.
I'm directing, the policy is directing to the website.
Correct. So I'm talking about on Facebook to direct them to the website, so when they, the people at Facebook, they see it, they go there, and then they can.
And that's what I will do, yes.
That's, that's for the hydrant and for the, the fireworks, but turn comments off. Because I noticed the comments were, were on, on some of the posts, I just assumed it got missed. But that's here or there. I'm just, I'm just saying for that. And then also, with Dave's point, I as well got some stuff from councilmen, some of them from a resident about building bridges. And the same thing, if I'm not a, a yes person, I need to get off of council and get in line. And that's not, actually, I think it's, it's inappropriate for that person and anybody else in town that may think that. We are trying to build bridges. We may have a consensus of different ways of doing it, but it's unfortunate some people think that, and I just want to clarify that as well. So we are trying to build bridges, we just have a different perspective on when we're getting engaged by citizens. That's all.
Any further items? The hearing done. Moving on to future agenda item discussion. Of course, we have the items coming up with we mentioned earlier under Sandy's report. Is it given? So.
I'll be out on vacation for the first July meeting.
July 9th?
July 9th. Out of state, so for future agenda items, anything, if we want to do a work session with Solon Lang, we'd need to do it in the next like six days or something. Okay, so we're.
I will definitely be there and be supportive for it, okay?
Maybe Tuesday the 16th, are people around? Is that the right?
I think the 16th, I can do the 16th, yes.
I was thinking.
Are, are we doing this in the evening?
I, my proposal would be Tuesday at 6:30 on the week you don't have council.
Okay, that's fine.
And just, it is helpful to let me know when you're out of town, so that, or you can't call or, just to make sure.
Yeah, 16th is good for that one. And then just for your awareness, yeah, anything where you'd want, we, we need to have like, I, I think we've, right now, cleared a lot of the big rocks we need to have discussion over, so, but anything for that 9th. Just so you're aware.
At this time, our public input for items that are not on the agenda. This is, the comments are limited to three minutes. State your name, rise to the podium, and you'll have three minutes to present to the council on items that are not on the agenda.
My name's Anne Mishmish, 505 Circle, New Drive. Me and my husband have lived in this town for 24 years. Granted, I'm looking back at the ratio, it shouldn't have ever happened. I'm concerned about the fire station, but I was planning on coming into the meeting, and somewhere else it got leaked on Channel 9 news. It was very upsetting to my husband, the numbers, and I'm not sure how it's getting leaked. So my concern is there, because we are having, we have people very passionate, you know, and I want what's best for this town, because I love this town, but we already have property taxes going up. We still have a water bill that would be water, could, this water plan, that we still have 15 years left to pay on. So I can understand some of those concerns, but I do want what's best for this town. I'm just letting you guys be aware of it, it was on Channel 9's news, so I'm not sure if someone up here had permission to talk to them, or who's leaking it.
I'm sorry, what do you mean by leaking?
They, they, someone went on Channel 9, it's on the Facebook page, and talked to Channel 9 news about the proposed fire station.
So it's public record. It's, it was published, yeah, everything was published on Friday. Channel, I don't think Channel 9 talked about anything that Channel 2 hasn't already had on, so.
Oh.
I mean, there's no secrets in city halls, is what I would say.
So, so as far as you know, no one's talking to them, or?
No, we absolutely are talking to them, because it's all public record. It's, it's, these are all public, this is all published, you know, available.
So they can access it from that?
Absolutely.
Right, they, they actually, they visited this morning for footage.
So maybe that's where they came up with the story.
Right.
Who, who asked for the, who asked for, who, who asked for the news to come today, out of curiosity?
I, my guess is that they saw Channel 2 had done all the coverage of it, is honestly, I mean, we have no idea.
They, they call us and say they're coming at a certain time.
This is really normal.
Okay, just find, I didn't find any incidents, so.
I have never found it to be surprising when the media follows council agendas.
Well, I think it upsets the, the people in the town, though, when they watch the news, and all of a sudden, they see this coming up. They're, you know, that the city council meeting is happening, but they didn't see it on the news. So it's just adding more.
But seriously, I, I'm surprised in the City of Atkins that we don't actually send our agendas to the media. That's what, in, you know, my experience with Cedar Rapids is, we, we provided all of that to the media. It's part of public government.
True.
Because a lot of people, the media is a, is a way that all citizens find out about what local government is doing. It should not be closed, you know, doors, those are, you know, that literally is a constitutional.
That's what, we, we meetings all mean.
It is, so, no, it's, I, this is very.
Oh, and I, I can really understand the fire, the firemen's, you know, their frustration with the fire station. I'm frustrated, too, but we all have to come together.
Right.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll announce that the next regular council meetings scheduled for July 9th, 2024, at 6:30 PM here at the council chambers, and you're all invited to attend. And at that time, at this time, our business for the evening has been concluded, and I would suggest a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Second. Dave Fisher, okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Doug.
Yep, good night, everybody.
Night.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Yep, good night. You bet.